Good afternoon. So it is 4:48 here at City Hall, 100 Polk Avenue. City Council workshop, we have a quorum. The mayor and the mayor pro tem are not here, so the remaining council that constitutes the quorum may elect among themselves a person to chair the meeting until such a time that either the mayor or the mayor pro tem gets here. So that should be the first order of business council.
Nominate.
You need a nomination?
That would be...
Nominate, don't.
Yeah.
Mayor shows up.
Sure. Second motion.
All right. Is there consensus for Councilmember Willis to chair the meeting until such a time as one of them gets here?
Yep.
Okay, I'm recording consensus for that, Danielle. We can go ahead and get started. Councilmember Willis.
I'll call this workshop to order. If we would, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kim Davis, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellum. Mayor Morrison. Councilmember Willis.
Here. Okay, we have public participation, so if any member of the public wishes to speak, please fill out a speaker card, otherwise raise your hand. Are we online with this?
Oh, we are streaming currently.
There are no attendees other than staff.
Okay. Couldn't read the screen there, so I'll leave it to you to tell me if somebody shows up.
You're looking on...
If there's no public participation, then we shall proceed with the item for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Review and discuss capital improvement plan, CIP items presented to the city council at the April 4th, 2024 CIP workshop meeting, as well as updated CIP items provide direction to staff. Mr. City Manager, do you want to...
I'd be pleased to. Thank you, Councilmember Willis. So as you read, we did have the first CIP workshop on April 4th. Several CIPs were reviewed at that meeting, and the city council requested a second workshop meeting to be held, and this is that meeting. And I'm getting a call from Councilmember Kellum. If I could take it just a moment. Okay, we just got started. We'll just continue, and we'll see you in a few minutes. I'm sorry for the interruption. Mayor Pro Tem Kellum says that she is on the way. Just to recap, the purpose of this meeting is just to have another look at those CIP items that we looked at at the first workshop, but also the other CIP items have been added to this in a more formal format that's appropriate for the budget. The things, I want to review in detail the things that are different about the first workshop to the second workshop. So we did have one new item that was identified since the first CIP workshop meeting, and that is the Economic Development Action Plan, putting in funding for that. We had several recurring CIP items, which historically do not get presented on in the PowerPoint presentation. Those are included, and I'll be going over what those are. We have one item that was pushed to a future fiscal year based on council discussion from last time, and that was the community garden. And then we have six items that were identified by staff to push to future fiscal years to aid with possible budget restraints, and I'll be going over what those items are as we go to them. Additionally, the cost of one item was adjusted due to staff receiving updated data. So what you can do here today is, by council consensus, CIPs can remain as they're proposed in these documents we're going to be reviewing today. They can be tabled to future years, or they can be canceled altogether. And at the end of the CIP review and discussion, I'll do a recap of all the consensus items and a motion for approval would be required. And John, you've got the updated sheets, so the council could compare the first CIP sheets to the new CIP sheets.
I appreciate the council members that are here, who got here before the meeting. And Mr. City Manager, I have distributed and explained those new sheets to them.
Thank you. Okay, so without further ado, we'll just start at the top there. We've got community and economic development. Danielle, if we can go to the summary sheet. The first one there is community economic development, Economic Development Action Plan, and this was a product of the Business and Economic Development Board's meetings. They said, "We really need to update that action plan." It's, Dave, I don't remember now, it's like 12 or 14 years old. It's in need of updating, and this is for a consultant to prepare the report for us. And we're proposing that at $18,000 in fiscal year '24, '25. So that's a new one you didn't see until now. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, but we're looking at an old one on screen.
Oh, that's an updated date?
Oh, well, let me explain that, okay?
The price changed.
Yeah, let me explain, okay? So staff worked on getting these, all these changes to you, which you have in front of us. So there may be stuff you see on the screen, because these are brand-new that we just got done with. So the city clerk may be showing what previous we had, but everything you have in front of us, when you see 50K instead of 18, that's why I gave you the updates.
I just want to be sure that anyone that subsequently is looking at this knows that what is being seen in the audience is not current.
No, he doesn't have a new one online. I just gave him copies before the meeting.
So what can we give him to put on the screen?
Um...
Wasn't in the packet?
Well, I understand.
Yeah, you understand. You're just concerned about the public.
I just want the public to know subsequently what they might see, might not be the most recent.
Yeah, that would be on our shared drive, but the manner of how we did this is because of the timing and what have you. So I think councils should just state, when we're going through this, that that particular thing, it may show on your screen 18, just say it's now 50,000, and that's all. I mean, it's a workshop.
I'll use the latest for me.
Yeah.
I'll use the latest.
Yeah, you got it.
Mine show 18,000 for this.
Do you got the... Oh, here.
So, yeah, that one changed from 18,000 to 50,000, and that's for the consultant.
And there'll be other ones, so as we go through.
And we'll go back and recap these as we go.
Yeah.
Moving down through, we talked about there are several items that are recurring items, and you're going to start to see these in the fire rescue services. At the first workshop, Chief Sergeant was here, he talked about the vehicle replacement, FR1, and he talked about the new fire vehicle, FR4. So those were already presented. The other ones there, the firefighting equipment, radio equipment, medical equipment, computers, air conditioners, building equipment, those are the recurring expenses that I was talking about that don't get presented on, but they do get put in the CIP. So you can see all of fire rescue services, CIPs right there, and there are eight of them, throughout several years. But the impact for fiscal year '24, '25 is 599.5, and most of that is the new fire Moving on to IM department, this one, most of these were presented on before. They all were presented on before, I believe. We've got some changes, though. The IM building replacement was originally scheduled for 500,000 in '24, '25, and 500,000 in the following year. However, we've got some cost updates, and we're suggesting we push that out another year. What's being proposed in the new CIP is 700,000 in '25, '26, and 800,000 in '26, '27. So those were old numbers there. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Kellum is here.
Yes, I'll yield the gavel.
We had just gotten started.
Todd, I'd like to give the mayor pro tem the updates that the other council members have. Could I do that?
Yes, please.
Staff's been working the last two weeks on changing and pushing things out in the future.
I'll review all of it.
These are all the new summaries that go in your book. And then these two, there's only two additionally added. We have the concessions, and it should be the CRA, that's where we put it. And...
That's a good...
Just to provide clarification, I do not have the updated one for the screen, so you will not see the updated one on the screen.
We didn't have time to get on the screen. Then the Banana River Park thing, oh, yeah, it changed from, it's old when it's 100,000, it's 60,000. Right? That's it.
So we really didn't get very far, and we could just back up a little bit just to review for Mayor Pro Tem. Danielle, starting at the top, the first one, the CED Economic Development Action Plan, was planned for 18,000. It's actually going to be $50,000 for that study to get that. So that's what your new sheet shows. We're just talking about the changes. Then on the fire rescue, we heard the Chief Sergeant talk about FR1 and FR4, which are the vehicles. The other things that you see there are the recurring items that are, every year we see those things come through. So the whole fire rescue services, 599, 500, as proposed. The big chunk of that is the fire vehicle, and that's as far as we got before you came in. Moving down to the IM department, we got in the building replacement. All we're saying there is the two $500,000 entries are now, both of those being pushed to the right by one year, and the price has gone up. So it's now proposed to be 700, starting in '25, '26, and 800,000 in '26, '27. So not only did the price go up with that building, but we're pushing it out another year, and we're proposing we do that. There is going to come a time that we have to do that, though, and I know June has been wanting this for quite some time, and sometime we're going to have to bite the bullet, and those buildings just keep getting more and more expensive. Next one was updated. I just wanted to share that Central Boulevard improvements, IM4, that is tied in with Stormwater 1. So there's shown in $250,000 for IM4. I just wanted to add for clarity that Stormwater 1 also has that, and we'll get to that when we get to the last, it's on the last page. Wanted to talk about the City Hall air conditioning. That's IM5, $350,000. We want to push that to '25, '26. At that point in time, those units will be 10 years old, and we think that 10 years is about all you can really ask for for air conditioners in our saltier air environment. No change on the other items until you get to, let's see, IM8, roadway repair and maintenance. I believe that got pushed to '25, '26. Yeah.
No, we haven't done that. We haven't done that one yet.
I'm looking at the wrong one. I'm on IM9.
Look at IM9, yeah.
IM9, sorry.
Yeah, we haven't touched the IM8 yet.
Sorry, you're right.
That's for discussion.
My apologies. IM9 is the new bucket truck. It's proposed, $260,000. That's the one we're pushing out one year. Another, it's a staff desire to push that out one year. Moving down, and that's it for the changes on IM. Of course, we can revisit any of these that you want, but I'm just trying to go through quickly about what's changed. Moving down to resiliency, only one change there, that's RD2, Banana River Park Shoreline Enhancement Design Study. That cost change from $30,000 and is now $60,000. And that's just some updated pricing that we received. Moving on to Parka, Parks Department. Originally, we were planning $40,000 for two vehicles in '24, '25. Now, what we're proposing is splitting that and having $20,000 for one vehicle in '24, '25, and the other 20 in the following year. So 20,000 next year, 20,000 the following year. That's just going to have a $20,000 change, downward change for this year. I wanted to mention Parka 2 and Parka 3. Both of those are for Sherry Down Park. We didn't present on those last time, but we still don't know what the status is of Sherry Down Park, if we're going to get that or not. So we're still pushing those out. Tennis Court resurfaced, we didn't change that one. But the next one, Rover Space West, $90,000, we pushed to '25, '26. $90,000, yep. And the Gymnasium Court Dividers, $20,000. Staff is pushing that out to '25, '26. Then Parka 10, Community Garden redevelopment. This is the one the council talked about pushing out to '25, '26, so that's reflected Then the Canaveral City Park concession stand, that should not have been in the general fund, because that was always identified as a CRA. And I should say, it's never been in the general fund. It was just, shouldn't have been in this list, so it's moved appropriately to CRA, and we'll see that when we get to that page. So that's everything for the first page of the summary. Moving on to the second page of the summary. Danielle, if you'll go to the one that has, keep going until you see more orange on the page. There it was. Okay, this one is the library fund, and there's no changes on this. It's $30,000 every year we put in there for the CIPs. We didn't present on that, because it's a recurring one. The next page, next orange page, Danielle, is the CRA. So this is the one that we're going to be adding the concession stand to. So when you look at your new CRA page, you should see CR6 at the bottom of there, $315,000 for the CRA budget, and that's the only change to this page. Everything else stayed the same, so Canaveral City Park redevelopment, Civic Hub, Presidential Streets, traffic safety, public art, fire rescue, enhanced lightning protection, and now we're adding the concession stand to that. This is going to be a big year for the CRA coming up. Moving on to the next one is the wastewater enterprise fund. And again, here you have a lot of recurring items. The ones we did present on before was the WW14 sanitary sewer GIS mapping. We're not proposing any changes. We presented on wastewater 17, which is the pump enclosure structures, no changes there. And we also proposed, presented WW18, that's the vehicles that are energy backup systems, no changes there. So all the other ones are the recurring ones, so that's WW1 through WW13. Those are all recurring things. We can just take a look through there and see the kinds of things there are. Motor replacements, mixer replacements, lab equipment, air conditioner replacements. And then 15 and 16 are recurring ones, and as well as, 19 is proposed for '25, '26 evac truck. Currently, we don't have anybody that's licensed to operate that, if I'm correct on that, Jessica, June. So that's another consideration we have to have. Currently, when we do a vac truck, we do a contract service for that, right? But it could eventually save us time over money, so we're just putting a placeholder in a future year for a vac truck there. That's it for wastewater, and the last page is going to be stormwater. Couple of things I want to mention on this one. The Central Boulevard improvements, this is 65, 5, and 300,000. Those are increases due to inflation. We're proposing there that, this has appeared in previous budgets, but it didn't appear in the first CIP workshop, but it's still several years out. But this is the Central Boulevard improvements from A1A to North Atlantic Tim, is that correct? Yeah, just that stretch. We'll want to hit on that. Also want to talk about the Center Street Wet Pond and West Central Boulevard Wet Pond, that's SW4 and SW5. Both of those are contingent on property acquisition. If we don't have the property, we can't spend the money. We know we've been talking about our Center Street Wet Pond for quite some time, and we may or may not get the property. We've been eyeballing with the owner there. Negotiations are ongoing, but if we're successful getting it, then we would get serious about doing an improvement there. But same thing with West Central Boulevard Wet Pond. It'd be great to find a piece of property that's ideal for that, just to take some of the load out of the stormwater system, and also have another way to filter out the nutrients and the TMDL credits for that. So SW4 and SW5 are just depending on if we ever get properties for those. Lastly, I want to talk about, no, that was it. That was the last one. So Mayor Pro Tem, we can go back and revisit any other particular items you'd like to look at. Obviously, we're not going to know the impact on the budget, because we don't have our revenues yet. This is what we're looking at for our CIP plan, putting in the budget, and we know that final decisions are going to have to be made when we do know what our revenues are going to be. But do we like this this way? Do we want to push some things out? Do we want to cancel any things? Or do we like it as is? Mayor Pro Tem, back to you.
Well, thank you, Todd. And again, I apologize for being late. Got held up at work. I think that maybe we'll go for each council person and see if there's ideas on things you want to move out, or ideas you want to add. Maybe we could start there and go from there. You want to start, Kay?
Sure. Okay, so in our meeting on Tuesday, we talked about wastewater, potential increase on wastewater being 5%. And I had a conversation with John today. My concerns with increases right now, you have to look at a bigger picture than just what's going on, you know, here in our budget. Right now, we do have some properties in every state that are dropping as far as value. In our state, we have condo complexes that have the surge report, and that structural integrity report is coming back to some condo complexes and hitting them very hard. So it's resulting in assessments, and some of them are up to $50,000, and has to be paid within a certain amount of time. Some places, including homeowners' homes, their insurance have increased up to 400%. And so I feel like myself that timing is everything, and the timing is really pretty precarious to have any huge increases in things to our citizens because of that. When we get to a point, if we ever got to a point, and some people may say we wouldn't get to that point in this city, and that's possible. But if we ever got to a point that we were seeing the foreclosures that we saw in 2007 and '08 in this area, when a home is tied up in foreclosure, the bank usually does not worry about paying the taxes, taking care of the property, the grass, or paying the insurance, things like that. It just gets tied up in court until the property has a disposition on it. And so in that situation, we could be down on our tax revenue, and people are already selling in the area to relocate when they're in condos. So condos, it's particularly a precarious situation with them. Now, one thing that I spoke about when I spoke to John earlier is, I'm not one to not have reserves either. So for me, it's a blend of how to, what we do with the budget that we see here, as well as what projects we select, because if we say, "Well, we're just not charging the 5% on wastewater increase that was decided on prior council," well, if we do that, then we could be in a situation where we don't have the reserves necessary to fund our wastewater, and we don't want anything happening to that. So I am a big, a person that looks at things as, what is the timing? Is the timing right? And all indications that I'm seeing out there is, I mean, in the report we looked at Tuesday, literally on wastewater, showed us, last year, we didn't think that we would be in the situation where we were, you know, didn't have as much reserves as we do, as was projected. We don't know what's going to happen this year. In election years, when you look at federal politics in election years, things are always strange and stressful, based on who gets into office, it can go one way or the other. We've got between now and November, and now and next January, until a new president takes office, or our existing president, whichever one gets back in. So we have volatile times that are hard on people with very high inflation, in my opinion, at least. Go to the grocery store and check it out, because it's expensive. So my opinion is that we need to be very careful in what we select, and if we took a blend of some, pushing some things out, I was actually very pleased to get this update, and thank you, staff, for working so hard on this, because what we did, and what we went over just now, is actually exactly what I was wanting to see happen, because it's not a matter of do we want to do it or not, it's a matter of is the timing right or not? And we don't want to be in people's back pockets right now, when the state and the insurance is in their back pockets, as far as our property owners. So if we took, for example... So if we took, for example, and John and I discussed this, if we took and pushed some things out like we have, doesn't mean we say, no, we're never doing that. And then we do that, we might be able to have a blend to where we say, well, you know what? The wastewater increase might be 3% versus 5%. And that way, they're paying some of that monthly and some of it in their property taxes, which is less impactful if you've got it kind of split. So if, you know, that's my thought. And John, you might be more eloquent. I was a lot more eloquent earlier today than I am with this right now. We're trying to do it quickly. But I, I think that we need to make sure we're looking at, you know, need to haves and look at timing on things, which, like I said, I'm very pleased to see that we have started that process before we even got in here today, that staff started that for us. And make sure that the things that we're doing are things we need. And one other statement I'll make, we all know that we had an event with flooding on the Presidential Streets. My other thing that I am most interested in is if we do things with CRA money, what is going to be the most impactful on the flooding? And let me just tell you why. About a year and a half ago, I got my claim settled on my vehicle where the flood had happened on Ridgewood, and I lost my vehicle. And they got on to me because it was four years after the event that I filed the claim. So that means we had a flood event over five and a half years ago. It was enough to take out my vehicle. And so to me, I don't think anything that is not as solid on being very impactful to the flooding situation should be looked at. Now, we need to do the thing that has the biggest bang for our CRA buck and for the people that are dealing with those floods. So that's my opinion. I think we really have to consider the economy on looking at any kind of increases this year. Now, Mr. Taleo, do you want to?
Well, we had a good discussion, Kay. It was a very good discussion. What I would add to this is, as Kay was looking at, you know, what's this, this 5%? Could we alleviate this 5% increase? And how would we do that or whatever? And we talked about all the elements of this. It wasn't really one way or the other. As far as, as far as the, the impact is, there's, there's a lot of unknowns. Right now, we're saying we're going to be $185,000 to the, to the good if we do the 5%. Now, these are estimates and trends in what we're seeing right now. But there's no way to know what's going to happen with the, all these unknowns. Inflation, if equipment costs go up. Our CIPs that we say is going to be this much for next year, actually, the costs are higher. So you could ask yourself, well, what could happen? And we talked about this, Kay, if you just said, well, you know what? We're not going to do an increase. Well, the city has $250,000 in reserves in wastewater, which is, which is not a lot, okay? And if you, if you keep the 5%, at least that would give us a total of about $445,000, which sounds a lot better than, than 250. And it's very, it's just so close to the line that I know that, you know, you're trying to help the, the citizens and what have you. And I think we did an estimate, and I think it could be like, it could hit people over like 2,789 accounts or whatever could equate to maybe an average of, we, we're, the, the increase we're doing gets us about $265,000. Well, the, that each account could be affected on an average of about $90 a year. So I mean, every, I know, I understand every little bit helps. But my concern is this. If we go ahead and we do eliminate that, we don't know what's going to happen in the next year, and things really go foul. It's very possible, and Kay and I talked about this, that then not next year, but the year after, we might end up doing what Cocoa Beach is doing this year. I talked to Cocoa yesterday. Cocoa Beach is going to raise their rates 20%, 20% for the sewer this year. Cocoa and Rockledge, 5% apiece. So Cocoa and Rockledge are kind of like us with the 5%. So, but I can't predict, and we, Kay and I talked about this. I can't predict where the world's going to go after next year and where the city's going to land because I don't know the inflation and all those things that impact it. So it, it is a decision to be made by this council on how close you want to get to the line. Do you, does it make you feel better knowing that you have $185,000 if you do the, the 5% increase? If you bring it down to 3%, you would take the $262,000 to about, about 100,000, say about $90,000, $100,000 lower. If you went to 2%, you'd get down to about $46,000. And if you go to 1%, you're about even. And it's not good to operate even. We see what the surplus has done to us when this study was passed. In 2022, the study said we're going to have $561,000 in a surplus. But then inflation, salaries, the cost of materials, whatever, it get caught up with us. So.
And we don't want to, we don't want to not have reserves.
That's right. That's right.
We, we need reserves in case we have a major breakage. That's why, to me, it's important what we're choosing with the rest of our budget. Because it could end up being where we can lower that amount a little bit and kind of have a little bit of a balance with it.
And, and so that's where I, you know, and that's where I think that information will help council. And also, when Kay's talking about these other items like flooding in the city and whatever, and how we could help in those areas, then council has to balance whether or not they want to spend money, some more money towards the flooding, alleviate the flooding, and somehow have the rest of the pot of money, say like in the CRA, to do or plan for part of the program, like the Presidential Streets or whatever. But, you know, I mean, that's completely in, in your hands on how you choose that. And, and you have to determine what direction you want to lead the city in when it comes to these, these problems. And so hopefully that helps you.
Mayor Protem. John, what would happen, or even at a 5% or even if we were to go back to 3%? And a similar scenario happened for the next year?
Well, then we would, oh, go ahead.
Where would we be?
If this, if the scenario repeated itself, we would be right where we're at now. We would not be, we would not have a, we would not have a surplus. We'd be very close to not having a surplus. We could end up in the same place we're at because the cost of everything's going up, yet we're selling, we're saying, let's keep everything the same. So, yeah. And, oh, and the expected, the expected revenues, this is based on, these projections are based on believing that here we are this year, and let's just say our revenues are 1.5 million dollars. Well, we're projecting maybe the revenues will be 1.8 million, okay? So if those projections are upset by the economy, then maybe we don't realize 300,000.
Well, my thought process is this, that if we were in a similar situation, and if, as Councilmember Jackson was alluding to, is that we started having foreclosures, we started having vacancies, we still have to, we still have to treat that water.
Absolutely.
We still have to maintain all of that. And we will have less revenue coming in because there might not be homeowners here.
There's a, there's a very good.
Then we will be in a dire situation quicker.
It's scary to operate without a net or reserves. And we ought to remember, this is the enterprise funds, and we got the general fund over here, and never the twine shall tangle. And, and it survives on its own. The enterprise is like a business, and the general fund survives on revenues from 33% taxes and, and the rest from state shared revenues. So.
Councilman Willis, that's exactly why I don't want to go completely away with, with.
I understand that. I'm just merely, I'm merely saying.
Yes, and I'm in agreement with you. So if we could, if we can give relief in the actual budget and the thing, and the amount that their taxes will be, then it'll blend out a little bit. And truly, we can't go without reserves. You know, we, that would be very negative in the long run.
Okay, well, I guess I'll finish my thought there.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I'm done.
You have anything else?
Not at the moment.
Ms. Davis?
Fine, right now.
I have a few questions. As we look at this and the things that have changed or moved out, I'm just going to go one thing at a time with my questions. For the Economic Development Action Plan, we went from 18,000 to 50,000. What does that entail? And why is it that much more money?
Dave, would you come up and respond?
Yes, thank you. The 18,000, after reviewing it and going through and looking at what some of the costs of some of our previous plans have been recently, such as the residential, the Presidential Streets Master Plan, the One Way Study, I felt like 18,000 was woefully, woefully low. We're looking at a complete rewrite of the Economic Development Action Plan. And potentially, it could be, even be over $50,000. If you recall how much we spent on the Presidential Streets Master Plan, it was, as I recall, it ended up being over $100,000, so.
But the, the seat, I mean, the economic development plan doesn't involve engineers and all, like those Presidential Masters?
Well, there was no engineering per se in the Presidential Streets Master Plan.
It was just a concept.
Yeah, it was, there'll be a lot of data gathering. And that's, that was my concern, is anytime we're doing a, an update to a plan like that, there's a lot of public engagement. Because that's, that's really what this, the EDAP is going to be doing, is what does the community want? How do we want to grow? And that's going to require a lot of engagement and outreach on the part of the consultant. And anytime you start having these meetings, these engagement meetings, and you start involving surveying of the community, the hourly, the, the requirement, the consultant requirements are hours, starts, starts going up. And there's a lot of costs associated with those. And so I think even the 50,000 may be low. But I thought that that would be something that we could work with in that, in that range. I was trying to be conservative with that number. But it is a, it's going to be a very comprehensive analysis of the city. There's going to be a lot of economic data that has to be gathered.
I just wanted to add, Dave, that this would be done by RFP, so it would be competitive bid anyways.
Yes, yes. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yes, ma'am.
The IM building replacement got pushed out a year.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that? I thought that was in really bad shape, the building.
Yeah. June or Jessica, can you speak to the stat, the state of the building and what pushing it off means to your, to your department?
I mean, it's only going to cost more money when we push it out.
Right.
This building was started in 2008. So it's been pushed back from 2008 to this year coming. And it's getting pushed back next year and the year after. So it started, I think, at like 150,000 for the complete building. It's well over 1.1 million. Yeah. So, I mean, we could keep pushing it back, but I mean, there's whole size of large cats that could get into that building. It's in terrible shape. There's nobody, we just have it for storage, actually. We can't even leave people in there because of the mold.
Well, to me, that would be a critical need.
Agree.
So.
We would love to replace that building.
And that would be funded out of the general fund or?
Right.
Would wastewater or stormwater?
No, no, that's the general fund. That's IM. That's IM. And Mayor Protem, if I could just add some context to this because, you know, and I feel, I feel June's pain because when I got here in 2013, we were trying to do it, and we just kept pushing it out. When I got here, I think it was only going to cost 350,000, and then it kept going up. But what I was going to say, though, is, and we did push this one out because, because the criticality and the functioning of Public Works or IM, we took a look at that. I sat with all the directors on all these things we pushed out. And the reason we looked at this real hard for you all is that when I did a preliminary roll-up of the budget with the department expenses, now remember, I don't know what the gross taxable value is yet. I will know probably in another 10 days. Anyway, we knew, based on what we found out, is that we were going to preliminarily, and you'll see, this adds up to like, to cut, you know, to move out at least a million and a half dollars. And, but we do that every, we do that every year. I have these meetings with the directors every year. Because what happens is, is when we get together for the strategic retreat, and we, you guys want to see all the CIPs, all the directors come in and say, hey, this is what I'd like to do. This is what I like to do. And then that's what this whole process is for. Well, we can't do that because we cannot make up that gap, you know, of those, of those projected constraints of what could be maybe $2 million or whatever, that the budget can't handle it. And so I sat with each director, and we looked at what we needed to move out to close that gap. Because when we give you the proposed budget on 30 June and you review it, I'm sure you're going to see there's going to be more of a gap to close. And there may be other projects here that you're going to look at. And I'm talking more in the general fund, and this building's in the general fund, IM. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we didn't just take this out because, you know, I said, hey, June, you can't do that. It's, it's, it's that the dollars aren't there to do it. They're not there this year to do it, and they may not be there next year.
Well, if there was something else that we could move out and move the building back in.
Well, yeah, we did move, we did move a lot out. I don't see that in this budget. Maybe when we, you get the proposed budget and you see other things, you might say, you want to bring it back in. But honestly, with the cost of it, I don't, I don't see it happening. We can't close, we can't close the gap. And we got to be cognizant of how that's going to affect taxes, too.
But Mayor Protem is correct. That's why we're looking at all of this.
That's why we're looking, yeah.
Right.
That's why we're looking at everything.
And another thing is, you know, it was scheduled at 500,000. If we could do it this year, would it be 500 or would it be?
It was split, the cost was split over two years, thinking we could pay for it over two years.
So it would have been a million.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Let's see. My other question was City Hall, air conditioning, 350,000 pushed out a year. What are we spending on repairs and?
I think the, Lisa has this number. Do you have?
I've, I've got some numbers. I mean.
Oh, geez, sorry.
Is that Lisa calling? Yeah, so I get my train of thought. So throughout the year, you're saying what is it costing? We've had coils that, that, you know, we've had to maintain or whatever. So I'll just give you some examples. Like one spin was that it costs $8,000 to do this one set of coils here. And then it costs $10,000 to do this other set. Now, based on what we believe for this upcoming year, and, and Lisa, by the way, has done a fantastic job on this, we're looking at another $10,000 on another coil repair, okay, for the third unit or whatever, which could occur, which will probably occur. Todd, do you think it's going to occur the, be by the end of this year or next year?
This, this year.
This year. So what that'll do, Mickey, is that will get us, that will get us in pretty darn good shape to have that air conditioning functioning. to have that air conditioning functioning through all next year. And as the city manager said, and he's more of the expert on that than I am, that when your air conditioner gets to ten years, which it will be after next year, now it's time that you probably wanna be proactive and replace it.
I, I can't get to the dollars as much as John, but I can tell you how, how it really works. There's two large units up there, and they're the size of city buses. And each one of them has four, John referred to as coils, they're, they're compressors. Um, and those are the expensive functioning part of the unit each. So there's two units, four compressors each, that's a total of eight compressors. We've now replaced seven of them over the last eight, nine years. There's one more to do, and then they will, none of them will be original equipment. So we, we could, we could limp along, but we know we're just gonna keep replacing a compressor or two every year. So you're looking at anywhere from eight to sixteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, depending on how many go. And, and it, we do a great job of maintaining them. Um, we've got it, they're on a service maintenance contract. It, it does the regular recommended scheduled maintenance. We've got IM folks go out there, they rinse them down, too, just to get that salt off of them. And they do it, um, I think it's bimonthly. And we've got a hose bib up there just for that reason, so they can do that. So we, we do all the right things to maintain them. It's just ten years is about all you get in Cape Canaveral.
Question for you on that, if you don't mind me, man. Okay. In our first CIP workshop, we talked about corrosive coating, um, any of the parts that are replaced, you know, to hopefully extend the life of that. Have, did we find anything out on that yet, Todd?
Don't know where Lisa is on that. Um, that's a great question.
Because if anything has to be replaced, if we can pay to get it coated before it's installed, that could really make a huge difference.
Lisa's been talking to, to them, and, um, I don't, I don't think we've got the information on that yet.
There's, there's also things about, I'm learning about cathodic protection systems for these units, um, and other enclosures that can help keep the salt down. So all that's gonna be going into the next system, for sure.
Right. But if it, if, if we're having to replace a part, if we can do it with that part as well?
Possibly, yeah.
Then that's gonna make it, you know, last at least a little bit longer, you know? So I was just curious, so we found anything out on that? Thank you.
I think, uh, sometimes that, that's dependent upon the model, whether you can even purchase those parts configured that way. A ten-year-old AC unit might not, that unit might not, or that manufacturer might not even provide that. So kind of somewhat of a risk on that, but it's worth, it's worth trying.
Yeah, there's actually a vendor here locally that will coat with the AC units.
That's great.
And the parts with the corrosive coating. So I know they do, you can take a part to them. If you're getting ready to replace it, your vendor can take the part, they'll coat it, and then when it's coated, give it back to the vendor for install. And I know that on the residential systems, I don't see why it wouldn't apply for commercial. It'd be at least interesting to find out, so.
Thank you for that.
I'm gonna go past the AC, and I'm gonna ask about IM thirteen, about the City Hall office buildout. What does that entail? It says the second floor, but how are they planning, are we planning on making smaller offices, or what are, what?
There, there are two eligible areas on the second floor. Uh, one of them is on the A one A side of the building. As you step off the elevator and you look to A one A, there's a kind of an open lobby area that's never been used. One wall, and that's a, one wall and a door, and that becomes an office. Then the other eligible area is the large room, um, that doesn't have any windows, um, kind of across from the council member office. Are you familiar with that? There's, there's one room that has three doors. And it was designed that way so that it could potentially be three additional offices in the future. It would be making those three doors become three offices in that one large space.
So what?
Anybody else?
So that's just another example of putting off for one year, it went up almost twenty percent.
Yeah, it'll continue.
Cause last year it was ninety thousand.
Yeah. And we were gonna build that out, because with the, we know that, um, and we'll, we'll be gaining a, a few employees this year. One definitely here in, uh, City Hall. Um, and that's in anticipation to build it out, to be able to have these people have a place to, to work. Uh, and right now, in the budget, in City Hall, there's one position which is very much needed, the IT, uh, mid-level, um, mid-level technician to go under Mike Schaefer. We, we got Mike Schaefer as IT manager, but we, we need somebody, somebody else on staff, too, a backup there. So we intend on, you know, getting that person. Of course, that person needs a place to, to sit and have an office. And then the anticipation was, is if we can do the build-out, as we have a need for more people, well, then the offices are already completed. And like, uh, Councilmember Willis said, you know, the price is just, it's just gonna go up. But you just have to weigh that increase in price against if council wants to push that out to save a hundred and eight thousand dollars in this year's budget.
And another option is, we could just do one, like the, the lobby upstairs, and, you know, for this next year, and then do the other, the three office build-out another year.
So we could scale it down, and we might be able to save fifty thousand dollars there, or more.
But then we spend more.
The reason it was proposed this way is because the thinking is, you get one contractor at one time, you get a better deal doing all of it.
Anybody else? Kay?
Well, I'm just curious, with what we've got right here, I think, John, you had already said that you couldn't really do that yet. I mean, we don't, with what we've proposed with moving some of these things out, we really don't have any indication of what kind of increase we would be seeing on property taxes, right on the millage.
No, but I, they usually, for our property appraisers' office, I usually get that by like June first, sometimes May twenty ninth. But like between May, you know, the end of May, the last couple of days of May, the beginning of June. And they give me that estimated gross taxable value, which then opens the door for myself and my staff back here. So we can, um, go ahead and apply that, and then we see what the gap is, cause then Joey and I will put together the whole budget with all the departments here. We're gonna be doing this in the next ten days. And, um, then we can put a millage rate in there based on the gross taxable value, and now we see how much revenue we're gonna get.
And I'm glad that Councilmember Jackson brought that up, because that underscores the value of having these workshops. Because we're doing a lot of the detail work now about what we want, and what we don't want, what we would like to have, and what we don't have to have, so that we do get that analysis. We've already got this stuff fresh in our minds, what it is we really wanna do, or the things we're okay pushing back. And it, it just makes the job so much smaller when we actually see what, how the impact's gonna be.
Okay, and then the, I have one more question, too, please, if you don't mind. Um, so throughout the budget, or throughout the CIPs, there are new sustainable vehicles throughout for hybrid. We've got a pretty nice fleet of hyper, of EVs out there and all of that in the parking lot that I've seen. And some of them are definitely older, you know, but you have to understand, I'm an old car girl, I like old cars. So in a city with, that's really got pretty much a mile from any point you're in the city, to the other end of it, are these vehicles really high mileage? And like I noticed, one of the vehicles, which was the Jeep with Parks and Rec, has issues from not being used, and we're looking at golf carts instead, which we pushed one of them out. So my question is, have we looked at overall, and I'm not sure, um, how you would do this, John, with the groups, you know, what is this, are any of them just simply to get to a sustainable vehicle scenario? Are all of these ones that absolutely need replacement?
Well, I could tell you that the Chevy, the Chevy Malibu is ready for the graveyard. I got an amazing staff to could get a car that's worth nothing and put it on the auction or whatever, and get a thousand dollars for it. But that's a different, that's a different scenario. Um, but like the Chevy Malibu, it, it, you know, it's a must. What, and you know what our biggest, one of the biggest hindrances here is, and then this car is like twelve, twelve years old or whatever, is we got a very small city here. And when you don't drive vehicles, it's just as bad as if you're out there tearing up the roads. And the, the vehicle over, through COVID, too, went through no use practically. I mean, we were using that vehicle to run from here to the post office. Because remember, during COVID, our folks weren't going to training and over the state, right? The, the car's not getting driven. And it's, it, it is, it is a, it is a disadvantage when you're living in a small city and you have these cars that you can't put mileage on them, right? We all know you gotta get on a highway and do sixty, sixty-five at least once in a while to blow out or whatever. So that's, that's, hasn't helped us. But we may, you know, the directors are good at evaluating these vehicles. And for the Chevy Malibu now, i- it's an absolute no-brainer. And we need a reliable car here for City Hall, which is gonna be shared by Resiliency, the IT manager, and the city clerk's office, and of course, whoever else might need to use it. But, um, you know, we're only getting one vehicle, though, to keep costs down.
And that's a hybrid, it's the Ford.
And it's a hybrid, yeah.
Which I'm, I'm happy to see the hybrid, because we, from, if you look at anything out there, you see going away from a hard EV to a hybrid is what the manufacturers are doing in the, in the car industry, auto industry. So that makes sense. But, for example, we've got Parks and Rec that's, and absolutely makes sense for them to have golf carts. I mean, a golf cart, it does. Um, but we have Parks and Rec, and this was from the original CIP that I saw in, um, in April, we have one for Public Works, we had some, one for the resilience division.
Mentioned the Public Works ones are either a F two fifty or a twenty five.
And those, I saw those, and we would definitely need one, cause one's gonna be pulling the excavator. So those we know we need. But, um, any of the, you know, like the Resiliency Division, now we know that was the, to replace the Malibu, am I correct?
That's right, because there was a plan originally maybe to get two cars, but we're looking at cost savings, how much will be utilized.
And who all would share that?
That would be, uh,
City Hall.
City Hall, basically City Hall, anybody in City Hall.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so really, it's, and then with Public Works and Public Works and Water, those are our two trucks that we need. I saw those, those are in need, as far as I think, my opinion. Um, and then the Parks and Rec, the Jeep, even though it's low mileage, it's just, it needs work. And believe me, John, I live right on the beach, so I know not driving a car, and I've spent, and I've bled money over it, so I get it. But I wanted to look at that as well, just because, you know, I'm fixing it now, what's wrong with it? If it's low mileage, because it hadn't been used, um, and then, you know, put our golf carts out. But it sounds like everyone's worried about what they're paying more for next year, um, or that's been mentioned several times here. So, um, I'm looking at what can we sacrifice now to minimize impact on taxes, since we went up twelve percent? Wasn't it twelve percent we went up last year?
Eleven, well, eleven point four, whatever.
Eleven point four percent, that's a pretty hefty increase for last year. Um, so I'm trying.
Oh, not in taxes, in gross taxable value, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, we didn't go up eleven. We only went up, uh, I don't even know if it was four percent, I don't even know if it was four percent. I'd have to look, but no, that's gross taxable.
So that's not nearly as bad.
Eleven point four, yeah.
So the, the millage, it was four percent, okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a few more questions, uh, going through these. Um, IM eight is, uh, Long Point Road, two hundred and fifty thousand to repave that. I know that the local roads committee recommended that we do this. It's really, it's really not that bad, and I know that in the years past, we were gonna do the park out there, but then there was supposed to be a retention pond that was gonna help with the flooding. Where are we on that? And shouldn't we do that first?
Yeah, I'd like Tim to come up and speak to that. Is Tim?
Tim.
Um, and, and that's a very good, that's a very good point there, because this road repair thing, Tim's gonna give you a kind of a, whether or not maybe this thing can't be pushed out, too.
Actually, when we talk about it, can you talk about all three roads? It's Long Point, Cherry Down, and Harbor Heights, just the council's fully aware of what you've got in mind for the next three years.
Um, so, uh, this, when I was asked by Todd to kind of go around and look for non-presidential streets, and the local roads committee had a meeting on this, uh, we looked for roads that were in the worst condition. Um, in the past, we had kept a whole list of roads, from the best-looking roads to the worst-looking roads. Uh, some of those roads have been completed, some of them have not. So I kind of went off that list. Long Point, I believe, was on last year, and it went up because of inflation. But the re, the, the way I structured this was kind of like the beach crossovers under infrastructure maintenance. Each year, we would do another one until they were all done, and of course, we would revisit it, re-investigate what the roads look like, what kind of shape they're in. So being a part of the local roads committing myself, um, I know that there were a few others that wanted to go out and do a fresh look at all these roads. So I went ahead, and I went out, actually, and looked at the ones that we had on that list that were the worst ones. They can be swapped around, they're about all in the same condition, according, you know, to the FDOT, uh, the way they judge their, their roads and stuff. About the pond, the pond was included in the Estuary Park project, but the Estuary Park project was canceled by council. We have not had an engineer go out there and try to figure out if there's a room for a pond or anything, because that was actually, uh, part of the other project. Um, so, but if council wishes that, you know, for us to look for possible ways of getting, uh, stormwater retained at the end of that, um, road, I, I would be, yeah, I would.
Well, I, I mean, we talk about flooding all the time, and that, when it rains, it floods down there.
Right.
And, um, I, I could see spending the money on a retention area.
Okay.
Because if you pave the road and it continues to flood, isn't that undermining the?
Sure, yeah.
Is that Long Point y'all are talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And is this Long Point, Tim? Just wanting to make sure. That's what I thought. Okay, so, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, I, I was just down there.
Okay, you've seen it, though.
So that, that project includes paving and curbing. Um, at the end of the road, I was gonna include digging out that, um, dry retention. Well, it's not dry anymore. It is close to the wetlands, so I think the more the river has raised, the wetter the lands have been.
Right.
So the more rain that we get, of course, it looks like we're flooding out in that area. But I think it's just the height of the river water merged with stormwater. But I, I have, I, I was gonna include in the project that they dig that swale area out at the end of the road and clean the flumes off on both sides. Um, but to get to where we're at, I would have to probably get an engineer involved and see if we can put some kind of retention area, uh, where originally we had stated we were gonna put one with underground, uh, pipes.
Yeah, I, for me, my opinion, I think that would be priority over paving, first off. And then, you know, maybe we could start with Cherry Down Lane, get that paved, while we look at the, um, Long Point, you know, the swale or whatever we need down there to help with the flooding, um, my opinion.
I have a comment about Long Point. You and I have been out there several times. A lot of that flooding is on the backside of the northern side of the street's properties. And that flooding comes from a different area than the street, correct?
A lot of it does, yeah.
It comes from the, it comes from, uh, the, the subdivision behind them.
Yes.
Where they, where they were built on raised property.
Right, they built their whole property, what, four feet higher than?
Yeah, and all that water runs off onto Long Point. Yeah, and all that water runs off onto Long Point.
On the north side?
Um, I mean, excuse me, the south side, south side. When I go that way, it always seems like going north. But I mean, you know, there's, there's several residents that their backyards flood.
Yes, absolutely.
And actually, there is a, um, a little stream area or finger area that runs into the river that is basically mucked up now. I mean, it's just, it's overgrown and.
Near that wall.
Yeah, nothing, nothing's getting out. But that, we're limited in what we can do about that.
Is that all St. John's area there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think to your point, Mayor Protem, I think that a retention pond or any kind of, uh, of exfiltration that we could put at the end of the street could help. And maybe there's some way we can also alleviate some of that flooding on the backside of those properties to the south, so.
This is where I wonder if our rain garden concept would be a good concept for back there.
Well, you, I think you would end up having to put it in somebody's backyard.
The difficulty with this, this whole area that me and Councilmember Willis are talking about is that it is right next to wetlands.
Yeah.
So the hard part about it is if you dig a foot down, you're in water.
Yeah.
You know, so things over there flood.
Nothing to percolate through, I get it.
Exactly, yeah, and it's, it's, those are, that's a difficult.
Depending upon who you talk to, you, you don't know what's underneath the, the soil there, so.
Mayor Protem, I, we may be heading toward a consensus to swap Long Point and Cherry Down?
That's what I would.
And then put in, look towards a new one for a stormwater solution for Long Point in the 24, 25 budget? Is there consensus for that?
Is, is Cherry Down as severe a problem?
Cherry Down's a nightmare. The only reason I say that is the, the city was supposed to maintain it for seven years as in not repaving it and, and doing huge improvements to it. But to adopt it, we had to manage it for seven years. When we were done with that seven years, I went out there and I know we've had a lot of, uh, problems with it, with stormwater, just the way the road looks. I think somebody tried to put in speed bumps and it failed. They have, uh, French drains across the actual road itself that go into dry retention areas on both sides of people's private property and stuff like that. So, um, that, that'll be a, a good project to look deep into.
Would, would resurfacing or reworking that roadway alleviate any water problems on Ridgewood?
The only water problems that I know about are Cherry Down Park.
Which is right there.
They, uh, they have a swale system, they keep a lot of water on their property, they also keep it in their parking lot. I think they need to be restructured, but, um, I didn't see.
But, but the street is not contributing to anything.
Yeah, believe it or not, I didn't see a lot of, uh, I didn't see a lot of road flooding that was contributing.
What I'm getting at is, is Cherry Down Lane contributing to any other water issues?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, I'll record that as consensus to swap Cherry Down for Long Point.
Is that alright with everybody? Kim, Don?
And, and also propose a stormwater solution in this budget for end of Long Point?
Well, does that, does that get us anywhere on reducing any costs though?
If, Mayor Protem, if I could just jump in here, uh, it's music to my ears what the city manager said because, you know, the budget is going to be tight. And Tim and I had a discussion on these, these roads and, you know, soon as the city manager said what he said, I was like, yeah, that's exactly where we got to be. Um, what I would say is this though. Like the consensus is great to get the roads switched around, but I, I want to ask this question. If we got to the point, Tim, if we got to the point where we found that we couldn't do these roads, this road next year because of constraints, Tim, would it be in your expert opinion that the three roads could be pushed out a year?
But still do a stormwater solution on Long Point?
And still do a stormwater solution, yeah, because we got the money there. And I'm just, because, and who knows, maybe we could do the, do the, uh, the other road, Cherry Down and, and, you know.
But I think the question is, what's the cost of that deferred maintenance on those three roads for one more year? If we were to look at that, is that significant?
To, to be honest, no, it's not significant.
So that's a, that's a scenario this council can look at when we go to budget time.
Those, those two roads are not falling apart, they do need to be reconstructed, they need to be restructured, but they're not falling apart.
So I, I, I think we see the consensus to swap this, those two on IM-8 and then create a new one, IM-14 for a stormwater solution. They'll be represented when the council has their first budget workshop. And the council knows they have the option to push IM-8 back a year.
And that gives us a $75,000, just by what the city manager said, that gives us $75,000 less hit to the general fund.
That's great work.
If I'm not mistaken, for the record, I believe if you guys end up pushing the projects out for the roadways and do the stormwater, that will be a new SW project, not an IM.
Right.
Correct.
Where there was money, where there's money.
Right, correct.
John, would, would ARPA money be able to help with that? Because of the flooding?
Yes, yes, it would if we have ARPA money left. Uh, we, we've been, uh, we got some, Joey, right? We got, we got some ARPA money left, uh, but we, uh, we've been, you know, obligating or allocating that to, um, to different, different buckets for this year and next year, so. But there could be some, yeah, there could be some.
Well, that's something we could look at.
Yeah, and plus, we do have money, um, in stormwater unrestricted that could, I don't know what the cost of this pond would be or whatever, but we probably could, we probably have $200,000 available to do what you're talking about, yeah.
So we're going to push the, push it out a year, we're going to do the stormwater.
Or, or there could be a consensus to change it like the city manager said, put the other thing up front? Or does that even make sense, does that make sense, Tim, based on us not?
Well, I think he just said it is not critical.
I, I think we should just go ahead and push them all back one year and create the new one.
So just leave, leave IM-8 as is, just push it all back one year?
IM-8, okay.
Okay.
And, and add the other.
And add the, the stormwater, okay.
Mayor Protem, can I, can I ask one question of someone else in the audience? Uh, Lexi, would these three streets be eligible for a complete streets grant? If we could get it?
Um, I would, I'd have to look into that, um.
Well, we're potentially going to give you a year to look into that.
Yeah, I'd have to look into it.
Year and a half.
Uh, there's, relatively speaking, for some of the larger grants that would fund a holistic complete streets approach, these are small typically. Um, and a lot of those grants, uh, prefer, or rather are most applicable for shovel ready projects. So we'd want a design prior to application. There does exist funding for design.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just a little bit, there's, there's less funding for it, I'll say. Um, but I mean, we can, a lot of grant writing is just kind of massaging the process of, of a design plus construction. So there's, there's certainly, um, opportunity and potential. I, I'd be remiss to say it's probable, but it's definitely possible.
Well, I'd, I'd like to go with possible.
Possible's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, my next question is replacement of the bucket truck. We pushed that out a year, but the last we heard, it was, we had to repair the other one and they couldn't do jobs because that one was down. Where are we with that?
It's, it's back in service now. It, it was out of service for the Christmas holiday, which is why we didn't have banners on Ridgewood.
So it would be June, okay, you think, to push it out a year? Okay.
Mayor Protem, I just want to make sure too, city manager, did we need a vote for consensus or were there all the nods of the head?
What I was going to do at the end, I was going to go through everything, just to capture all of the changes. We're just kind of in discussion right now.
Just consensus, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, my next question is the Cape, City of Cape Canaveral Community Center Energy Storage System. It says here a hazard mitigation grant for 75,000. Have we applied for that or is that something that we pay for and then we get reimbursed or?
I'll defer to Lexi on that.
Which, um, which CIP number are you referring to?
IM-10, hon.
IM-10, yes, so that is an energy storage system that we are currently in the throes of, um, application review with FEMA, with the HMGP. Uh, so essentially, it is a 25, 75% match where the city, uh, is responsible for 25% of it and the federal, if, if awarded, the feds would provide 75% of it. So essentially, it is, it is reimbursement based. So it is a, it's a, we pay for it and then we apply for reimbursement, yes.
Okay.
So you'd see an offsetting revenue line if that gets approved?
Thank you. The Therm Boulevard improvements, impact fees, Fund 107, is, is that money we have in hand or is that money we're expecting?
Um, we do have the 1.2 million, we, we have, we have 800,000 and then we will get the 400,000, um, in the upcoming year. Is that correct, Dave? I got 800,000, will we get the 400,000 for the upcoming year for the balance of the 1.2 million when we're doing the job?
Hotel impact fees.
Yeah, this is the hotel impact fees. But we've been approved for the 1.2 million. Yeah, so.
So that's money we can count on.
Yeah, if, if, if you kind of keep, kind of, the, the rule of thumb is each of those hotels, when they get their certificate of occupancy, which is meant at the end of the project, when they're getting ready to open, they're, through the county, they're paying us $400,000 in impact fees, each hotel, in automobile or transportation impact fees. So as we know, um, we've got two hotels under construction right now. Uh, we've got the, um, up on the north end of the city. So there's $800,000 in impact fees. Now, the question is, will they have those, when will they be completing those projects? You know, based on the, the status of each of those, I'm, I'm guessing that they'll have those done sometime in next, during next fiscal year, 24, 25. So we should be having those, those funds coming into the city as, as, look at those as revenues in 24, 25 sometime.
Let's see, you know, I had a question too about the offices, the four additional, you know. To me, it, we're 1.9 miles, our population has not grown very much and I know we need more employees. But, you know, it says in here for future anticipated needs. I'm sorry, IM-13. I think we discussed, maybe Kim said something about maybe just doing one for now.
Yeah, you just lose some of the economies of scale, that's all.
Right.
That could help us.
And we need an IM?
IT tech, yeah, because right now we just have Mike, the IT manager. And it's, it's very important that, you know, there be some backup there.
Did Sam have a backup or were you the backup?
You know, I will, I will just tell you that Sam was a, what do you want to call that, anomaly? To have somebody who worked as the IT person, very, very good, very good, did a lot of good things for the city and to have one person, we relied on one person. Now, when I say we relied on one person, if God forbid something happened to Sam, yes, I had a contingency plan and, 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 and people lined up to jump in there. But Sam was able, over time, and Todd will tell you, Sam was able to give us the support we needed because all Sam did was come to City Hall and work.
Yeah, we always thought of IT as a contract service, so Sam was the primary, but there would be another contract that we could activate right like that if something happened to Sam. Thank goodness that we never had to do that, Sam was always able to respond.
Well, Sam never went on a vacation either, so, I mean.
So now we've got a full-time employee, but no backup unless we go to a contract service again. That would be, that's today's backup. So we're saying it'd be, we'd be better served by having a mid-level employee doing that type of work, maintenance work.
And then that means Mike could go on vacation sometimes, so.
But we're not flying without a net right now.
Right.
It's just a better way to do it is all.
Um, let's see. I think that is all my questions for right now.
Mayor Protem, if it would help, if, unless council has some other things we want to discuss, what I can do is kind of summarize my notes here in each section and then we could just, I'm sorry.
I do have a question, could we do that prior? Or, I was just going to ask a question about Cherry Down Park.
Sure.
Okay, I know in the past, it says acquired Cherry Down Park. I know we've been through this before discussing the, you know, where are we as far as like the status of getting it or, I mean, because it was always so with the county, you know.
Maybe Councilmember Willis could give a better update on where we are than I can at this point.
Councilmember Davis, you're the first one to ask that question in the last 15 years, so it's just, no, I'm joking. The question gets asked every couple of months.
I just want to know where we are now because there's always been so much discussion.
We're still nowhere.
We're still nowhere.
We're in the middle of nowhere.
We, we, I did speak to county commissioners and, uh, you think, you think we might move slow? I, I just don't, I don't know when that possibly is going to happen.
Okay.
I, I don't think they're inclined to give us what we would want in order to, to take it over at this point. That may change after our next election, I don't know.
So 25, 26 is a possibility, but not, okay.
I, I think it was a relief, I'm putting words in Councilmember Willis's mouth, but it was a relief to say we don't have any skin in this game right now when he went there.
Okay. Got it.
Well, I did tell them that we don't.
Yeah, we don't. Um, if anybody else have any questions?
I have one about the shoreline enhancement design. Um, RD2.
Thank you.
Banana River.
Yep. And thank you for standing up there, that's who I wanted to see come answer these things for me. Okay, so I was looking at that one and now I'm going to be flipping to find it, there we go. Can you please give me information about the, um, hybrid set of practices, living green and armored, that is going to shore up? Because this deals with that section of the water plant, right? And the shoreline that's roading or does it?
So this is separate, so along our, I wish I, we could all just imagine a map of, uh, man, of Banana River Park and then that, that small private area, Manatee Sanctuary Park, and then south of, moving south further is the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant shoreline is being examined, designed to be stabilized by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer through their, um, Section 14, uh, I forget what CAP stands for, but their CAP program. And that's what's currently underway for design. Um, and so that's separate. This has to do with the Banana River Park shoreline, specifically the design. Now, U.S. Army Corps has taken the lead and we're, we're lending a very supportive role to their design for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, because that's considered a critical asset, a critical piece of infrastructure.
Right.
We are, um, steering the ship more, more definitively, so to speak, for the Banana River Park shoreline stabilization project. We are going to try to incorporate, in, in this proposal, what we're looking to do for this design study is to find the best hybrid green design for that shoreline to emulate that natural, a natural shoreline, more so than something heavily armored. So that it is something that can, the way that I say it is it's, uh, it's compounding resilience. So it, it appreciates when you, you know, a tree appreciates when you plant it versus something, uh, hard depreciating as soon as you install it or construct it. Um, and so this is to fund that study. These types of studies can be pretty expensive because it's pretty specialized, um, but.
Where would I find the information about? Okay, and where would I find the information about? And do we have any, is it in the CIPs for, you know, with the Army Corps of Engineers for the plant and the shore? Is it included in here at all?
For the plant, no. This is not included in this upcoming fiscal year because any money that we are, that the city is fronting for the U.S. Army Corps, the wastewater treatment plant, is coming out of this fiscal year's budget, not the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
And that is only, that only kicks in, so the way that it works is Army Corps will pay out of their own part, out of their own pocket, up to 100,000 for the design. And then after that, every dollar, we split with them 50/50. So we have $50,000 potentially up to, and they have a cap of 200,000. So if it costs a total of 200,000 to design the shoreline for the wastewater treatment plant, we will be paying 50. So we already allocated that in this year's budget. And this design for Banana River Park, the design for it, we're proposing for next year's budget and they're totally separate.
Okay.
We may be able to learn from Army Corps or Army Corps can maybe learn from us because they've been, they've been really kind of avid, hey, what are you guys thinking? What do you want? And like in terms of brainstorming, while also obviously putting in best management practices for engineering and design from their perspectives. So there's definitely kind of a knowledge and resource share there, but they are completely separate projects. They won't touch Banana River Park shoreline.
Okay, and when do we anticipate any kind of design coming back since that is critical infrastructure?
They are looking to get it back to us as soon as possible. I'd say by the end of this year. Don't quote me on that 100%. We are on their expedited project list, which means it'll take no more than five years. Expedited, it's the federal government. So we are trying to move that along nice and quick.
Okay, thank you.
So I can, I can get a more definitive date on that for you, but I feel confident in saying by the end of this year, having a design.
Okay, thank you, Lexi.
Comment, while we're on the Banana River Park, I'd like to comment that that is eroding quickly. And what we are seeing on Banana River Park, we're also seeing where I live on Porta del Rio, all along the Banana River shoreline of Cape Canaveral. So anything we find out on this study can benefit the residents if we can share it with them. And I think we're even going to be trying to get some grants for locals because PDR is already looking into trying to find grants to create a green barrier, if you will. And we're trying a lot because it's encroaching. And any flooding, we're, as we all sat through that workshop on being resilient and the flooding, they told us that the worst flooding is going to come from the river. And if we only strengthen Banana River Park and the wastewater treatment plant, it's still gonna flood. Every resident over here on Banana River is gonna flood and it's gonna get to the wastewater treatment plant because it's, wastewater treatment plant is not uphill from where I live. So I think this study, when it gets done, really needs to be shared with all the homeowners and condominium associations along the river. We've done a lot of good work on the beaches. Now we need to do some work on the riverside.
Councilmember Willis, do you think that, and I know I've been here like 11 years or so, do you think that that could survive a bad hurricane year? Because that has been notorious for when we do have the bad hurricanes, that that place is just, it almost eroded up to the fence one time on the soccer field.
It, a real, one hurricane that just sits on us for a little while, will tear it up. And I've only, since I've moved to Cape Canaveral, I've ridden out every hurricane that was, that came through. And I've seen the river crest our shoreline, which is built up with, you know, the Kakinah rocks and all of that. And it's crested that several times, so it gets up there.
Now, which part are you saying it would, at the water treatment plant, it would encroach or in the?
Yeah, it'll, yeah.
We've seen.
Now, I've seen it encroach up and over, but he was saying specifically with a storm and you said it would tear it up.
Well, it would, it would erode Banana River Park all the way. I mean, you're, the fence, the fence on the soccer field would probably end up in the river.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I've seen it over, encroach up onto the island. And I've seen in 2004 and all the storms, I've seen it where the river looked like the ocean as far as waves and people were getting flooded out. So this, to me, seems like it's very important that we get this. But I would just wanted to know a little more details about it, so.
Well, that study, that study, that study needs to be shared.
Yeah.
Yeah, so essentially, kind of any, I won't say that any benefit that one shoreline might see from a design that any shoreline will see. However, it'll help inform what might, may or may not work in certain areas. There's a lot of kind of factors that go into erosion and what causes erosion and then different tools to combat that. An additional thing just to keep in mind and, you know, to add to it is that it's not just erosion from the lagoon. There's also runoff. It's just sheathing, just ground sheathing that as water runs, you know, over the grass and then in between the Kakinah out there, it can also lead to erosion. Additionally, there are, there are a lot of grants out there for this type of project, especially when you can, especially if you're gonna focus on the nature-based portion of it where it not only is a way to armor your shoreline, but to restore habitat. Habitat restoration is a big deal right now for the lagoon because it, again, helps with armoring and the physical energy from the waves, but then provides habitat for some of those, A, endangered species of flora and fauna in the lagoon and then tangentially the benefit that they provide to the lagoon for water quality. So it is a multifaceted solution to a multifaceted problem, this nature-based stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. Does anybody else have any more questions? I have another one or two. The city concession stand. Thank goodness it's gonna go for, we're finally gonna get it done. I'm just amazed that $300,000, how many square feet is that? How much does it cost to build a house these days?
Molly, do you have that information?
And where did we, where did that price come from?
Molly's coming forward.
This is gonna be a design-build process, so we're kinda just aiming where we can aim. We don't know what will be the final square footage of it. All we have is kind of a sketch design with what we're, what we're hoping for. So until we actually get proposals in for what these design builders are able to do, we won't know a final number on that.
I'm glad Molly said that because the way we typically work, we pay for a design, get that done, and then we put that out to bid, so there's two separate costs. This is all rolled into one, the design bid, so that's covering both of those.
And we, Todd did a lot of work with CAD and providing a pretty solid scope of what we're looking for. So hopefully they'll, you know, they're not gonna have to do a lot of mind reading on what we're looking for and the needs of the actual facility itself. So we're, we don't wanna aim too low. We aimed too low last time. And aiming higher is not just kind of a reaction to inflation and trying to be prepared for that, but also because we've already learned the lesson of what happens when you aim too low.
Right. And I think the design that Todd came up with is really unique and.
I can't take credit for that. That's that young lady's idea.
I just suggested the shape. He did all the electrical and the, all of the structural stuff inside to make it happen.
Well, let's just hope that it comes in less money than that. But, you know, like you said, it's always better to go high and then.
Well, Mayor Protem, we wanna get this done.
Yes, thank you.
In this next year. Because you're right, we don't have to pay $450,000 for a.
Exactly.
Yeah, a concession stand.
I just wanna brag about another council decision that will make this go smoothly was when the council did the Canaveral City Park upgrades in the contract with W&amp;J and extended the sewer line to that outside bathroom, also extended beyond that sewer line to serve this future concession stand. And that was great planning.
Well, I don't have any more questions right now. I think that we need to, if you wanna summarize things.
Sure, so this will be a very important step for the city clerks to record, city clerk's office to record what consensus is. This will be very important for John and Joey to make sure they bring back the changes the council wants to see. So what I'd like to do is go through by department and just look at each one of the, each department and then ask for consensus from the council. Do we like this the way it is today? Understanding, we're not setting anything in stone today. Just, just so we can go forward with a plan and the budget that we can, we can amend later if we want to, but this'll get us that much closer. So we're not setting anything in stone, but what we're gonna do here. So starting at the top, Daniel, on the, oh, it doesn't matter because you've got the old ones anyways. CED, so that's the, CED-1 is the Economic Development Action Plan, $50,000, '24, '25. Keep it there, move it back, change it, delete it. It's out of council's discretion.
I'm sent, I agree with keeping it there.
I agree. I think it's vitally important to do this economic development plan, to lose, move forward with our bedboard and everything else that's coming along.
I think until we see the millage, potential millage, leave it there.
Okay, so we have consensus to keep it as proposed for CED-1. Next is looking at all the fire department, FR-1 through FR-8. We reviewed two of those in detail with Chief Sergeant at the first meeting. The other ones are more recurring. Total there is $599,500 in '24, '25. But looking out through the rest of the years also, we have got to keep that in mind. We're not just doing a one-year look here. Do we have anything in fire rescue that we wanna change at this time? And then looking for consensus on that, Mayor Protem.
Do we have consensus?
I'm good.
Yeah, I think we need to leave fire rescue alone.
Me too.
Okay, we'll record consensus for all the fire rescue items. Next group is the IM group, items 1 through 13. Two notations here on City Hall air conditioning replacement. We are definitely gonna be looking into getting protected parts, but also moving that out as proposed to '25, '26. And then the roadway repair and maintenance, we're gonna push that back one year. So that's all three of those roads would go back one year. The stormwater one, we're gonna get to that when we get to stormwater. So is there anything else IM 1 through 13 that we wanna change? Or we good with just those two notations? Otherwise, leave it as is?
As is.
Okay.
As is.
Okay, Mayor Protem, I record consensus, leave it as is with pushing back IM-8 one year. All right, moving on, we've got Resiliency Division. We've got two items there. There was quite a bit of discussion about the fleet vehicle, but also the shoreline engage enhancement design study. Any desire to change either of those from what's proposed or is there consensus to leave them as is?
I would say leave it as is until we get more information on, you know, where we have to make more cuts.
As is.
I will record consensus for the two RD items to stay as is. Moving on to Parker, we've got items 1 through 12. We didn't spend a lot of time talking about many of those. Is there any, let's go through those if we don't mind. Parker has.
13.
12.
12.
And that, yeah, that one of them was changed to the CRA. So we've got the Parker Department Vehicle Replacement. We did talk about that. The Parker 2 and Parker 3, both of those, we said earlier, those are Cherry Down Park and that's dependent on getting that park. So those will keep getting pushed back if we don't get the park. Then we've got the tennis court reservice of 115,000. We've got Rover Space West programmed at 90 for '25, '26. We've got manitary sanctuary park infrastructure upgrades. These are replacing things that need to be upgraded and updated there. I know Molly presented on that at the first meeting. The Banana River Kayak Master Plan, that's starting in '26, '27, 150,000 and finishing in '27, '28 for 135. The gymnasium court dividers, that's one that, Molly, I believe we pushed that one back, right? That's 20,000 now, programmed for '25, '26.
Todd, I have one question about that, the dividers? Because we pushed it back from last year. Is that, is that keeping us from renting that without those dividers and making an income?
No, not at all. The court dividers was more of, and I think the first time we discussed it right after the C5 was completed, was that's more of a creature comfort thing to kind of stop the conflicts between people playing different sports at the same time. And it would also give us the opportunity, say it was a rainy day and the kids couldn't go outside during summer camp, we could section off a portion of the gym so they could still play without having wide open intermingling with the public that's also trying to use the facility. So it would increase accessibility for dual things to happen internally, but it's not in any way holding up revenue from rentals or anything like that. In fact, it would, depending upon the individual users in the gym at the time that those are being employed, it could actually increase revenues because we wouldn't be able to, well, we wouldn't have to tell the public that, hey, it's summer camp, it's raining, we can't send the kids outside today, so you guys can't use the gym. So it could possibly give us a little bump. Obviously, it's not gonna make a huge difference, but yeah.
Molly, if you could stick around for these next few, just in case there's more questions.
Yes.
So that's 20,000 for '25, '26. Then we've got the Center City, or Center Street Park upgrades. This is replacing the rusting structure out there. Molly, is that one you pushed back also?
Yes.
Yeah. And you feel confident that we're not gonna have a structure dangerous or anything?
Unless we have one heck of a storm, I think we should be okay. And worst-case scenario, we remove it.
Understood. Then we've got community garden redevelopment. This was pushed back by council at the first meeting to 90,000 in '25, '26. Then we have Canaveral City Park tennis courts and that's $70,000 for design in '24, '25 and 335 in '25, '26. This, Molly explained at the first meeting was an outcropping from the civic hub workshops that tennis said they wanted to be separate and, I believe pickleball said they wanted to be separate in an attempt to try to please everybody, separate them. Any feedback you can give us on that, Molly?
We've got some chatter in the immediate community for the households and the residences that are immediately around that block. And if I was to push out anything that's still existing on this, that would be the project I would push out because so far the responses from the community that has, you know, watched some of the CIPs and seen that discussion has not been positive, so.
And there are water storage tanks under where those courts would be, correct?
Yes, and that's why the 70,000 you see is very much that is all design.
Okay.
Doing some tap dancing around those vaults to make it happen for the light posts or whatever. But I think this is a good area for council discussion about this. Do we wanna push back? Do we wanna cancel it? How do we feel about it?
I don't think that's a priority for, really, and I'm kinda hesitant. If you're saying the neighbors are already not liking the thought of balls and paddle sounds, we might wanna push it out or, what do you think?
I would agree.
I think pushing it out is probably the low-hanging fruit for us for this.
So is there consensus to push it out one year?
Yes.
Okay, we'll record consensus for that. I made a note here. Push one year. And the last one is the Ridgewood Crossover Memorial Pavers Program, $10,000 in '24, '25, which Molly went over that last time. So is there consensus for all the Parker items, 1 through 12, as is, with the exception of Parker 11, push back one year?
I had a question on PCR, PRC-112 because of the wording in here as I was reading the definition, Molly, so I wanted to check with you on this. Is that the beach access where we currently have stones in between Canaveral Sands at Royal Mansions?
Yes.
Okay, and we have in the description of the project, breaking up. Okay, and we have in the description of the project, breaking up the sidewalk and replacing with the pavers, is there a possibility that, and I'll tell you why I'm thinking this, but I really want your opinion, is there a possibility that it might be an option to go down the sides with the pavers, and the reason being is that boardwalk is consistently getting golf carts on it, or that sidewalk? Whether they're supposed to or not, okay? It, I'm constantly seeing that. People come across that, that particular path with heavy fishing gear and fishing carts, electric bikes, and all of that, so I wanted to let you know that, because I wasn't sure that pavers in the middle might be a good idea, although we have a lot of space there to do something.
Right, and that's one of the things that I considered, was if you've ever seen, and, and I'm, I'm not a sidewalk expert, and I also grew up in a town that still had a lot of brick roads, and some trolley car tracks from long, long days past, but I've considered a couple of different options, even just replacing different segments at a time, and I came up with the $10,000 price based on current, you know, currently if I wanted a driveway as long as that whole portion, that would, the estimate I got was $10,000 for material and some labor, even though a lot of that could probably be done in-house, depending upon workload, timing, everything. So there's a couple of different options that we could look at there, as far as where we place what, so there's, there's wiggle room, but I wouldn't pull it down too much further than $10,000, just because we know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
With inflation.
And I'm not, I wasn't sure about the stones, because I haven't looked at the memorial stones and what they would be like, because of course, yes, brick roads usually are pretty, pretty rough, you know, can withstand quite a bit, but I just wanted to make sure I shared that with you, because we wouldn't want to use something that can't take the traffic.
Absolutely, and, and we also, one of the other goals with this, especially when I considered it as literally ripping up the whole sidewalk, was room for growth, because to this day, we still get people that want to put a memorial out there, and I'm steering them to other areas at this time, so.
Have we identified other areas? Because I think it would be advantageous to have multiple areas where we're doing this.
So all of our new projects have pavers all over the place, so.
Excellent.
That's part of the plan, and that also allows it, I mean, a lot of people select this particular strip because it's, you know, they pick areas for memorials that are either important to them, important to the person that is, they're honoring, or is convenient to, for them to access. So having pavers in Veterans Park creates an opportunity to recognize veterans, having pavers at the Cape Center, recognize, gives an option for people that like to support the arts, that, you know, maybe even people that used to work in the old City Hall, that's an option for them, and then as we go forward and, and start looking at, you know, maybe things in the Civic Hub could have some paver elements, maybe we could introduce some paver elements in, in some of the other parks that are popular. I, I mean, in 20 years, Manatee's going to be a forest, which is exciting for, you know, the environment, but I don't think that the, the people on the ground floor condos around there will appreciate it quite as much as, as others.
Okay, great, I just knew that we have a lot of people that park in Canaveral Sands parking lot to go to those memorial stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's nowhere else to pull over.
Absolutely anywhere to park, so, you know, if it's someone that's not tied to that area, and there's places, like you're saying, then that's going to be good for all the different areas, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, you have a question. I know when we originally talked about this, we talked about putting a bollard there to keep the golf carts from going up there. Would that include?
I would support that as long as it didn't impede any access from emergency services or anything else.
Well, currently, emergency services uses Washington to get to the beach.
Correct.
And lieutenants here, I don't know, no, he stepped out?
Yeah, because they have that special, like, sand ramp alongside of the crossover, so it's not as.
I, I would be more in favor of doing like we did at Canaveral City Park with removable bollards, that with, with a key, you can remove a bollard.
Yeah.
And just put a few of those in.
And it could even be a solar light as well.
Just a few during, like, during spring break, are they going, using that to go out on the beach?
Yeah, we don't want that.
Okay, right, and I call in on, uh, too, I call the Sheriff's Department and get them to go out there, because we don't want that. However, they're driving up through the Canaveral Sands driveway, onto the sidewalk, onto the walkway, if you put a, a bollard right there by the, the garbage cans and the sidewalk and the entrance to the, they'll just go around it on the grass, they're all over.
I was thinking more of like, at the end of the sidewalk before you go up.
Yeah, where, where the bottleneck is.
Yeah.
Right, but they usually park by, before then, because they're parking by the bicycle ramp, or bicycle rack.
The golf carts?
Yeah, I catch them, they're out there all the time.
Mayor Pro Tem, maybe what we should do here is ask Molly to work with Tim's department, and perhaps June, to come up with a plan for bollards, update this price if necessary, and we'll bring it back for the budget workshop, we'll be talking about it then.
Sounds good.
And it, it may be worth checking, to check with the Sheriff's Department, because the thing is, a lot of times these guys are fast, they're there and then setting up, like I saw one in a golf cart towing a trailer full of beach gear, and he was pretty quick, because he went, he's, he's a vendor in the area that rents beach gear, and he was down there to set up and everything, and he was down that sidewalk, stopped, had it unloaded, and came back out again, you know, so it's them using the sidewalk, and sometimes it's, they're not accessing the beach, and sometimes they're parking, usually the, the people that are visiting our city are the ones that you'll catch that try to park there, because they're staying in a vacation rental in the middle of the island, so, just so y'all are aware, however you would like to handle it.
And that's also something that we could consider in phases, too, to keep the impact as low as possible for, for that.
Right, the design would make a, could make a difference with that.
Right.
Mayor Pro Tem, do I record council consensus for all items Parker 1 through 12, with the exception of pushing out Parker 11 one year, and Parker 12 revised to include the bollards?
Consensus?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, we'll record consensus for that, Daniel?
Yes.
PRC 11 is pushed out one year, and PRC 12 is being revised. Yes, be revised for that. Moving on to the next one is the capital improvement program for the Library Fund. Mayor Pro Tem, do I record consensus to approve as written?
Yes, Library Fund, stay the same?
Yes.
Sure, we'll record consensus for Library Fund to remain as is, Daniel? Moving on to the next one, which is the CRA. This one, we talked about Canaveral City Park redevelopment at the first workshop, the Civic Hub, this one, we, we should talk about that. This is if, assuming we do a design for stormwater, we would want to plug, program money to do some stormwater work, that's what $1,050,000 would, is plugged in there for, and that's, that was in last year, too, and it's just kind of rolling forward, so I think we need to spend some time on that. Do we want to leave that in there for now, knowing it's nothing set in stone tonight?
We had talked about things, information that we were going to try to get about the tanks and how much impact we would have, and having them upstream, you know, versus just doing presidential, and in our last few meetings, so, do, where do we stand on that, where we might be able to?
Mayor Pro Tem, we have another question, I'm sorry, two, two questions, I guess.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I have a problem with that, because we've already done a study with Kimberly Horn that states it's appropriate to do the stormwater there with Fillmore, I don't think it's worth the city having to pay more money to have other studies done, so, right?
I didn't think we were doing that.
I thought you were doing that, with wanting to get the, up another street, another area other than the Civic Hub, that's how I understood it.
And, and Tim can possibly add some here, but I think what Councilmember Jackson is asking is, by doing this, what are we taking out of the Center Street basin in terms of gallons of stormwater? And I'm not sure how much Scott, Scott probably did touch on that, the, the amount of water that could be going into the Civic Hub stormwater system, and how much of that actually is water that's not going into the rest of the basin? So what, what's that number? Do you remember him talking about that?
That, that actually was on the design, I believe he had on his analysis, I think he had a list of all the different areas that we could put underground stormwater chambers, and I think he had a number for each one, and like a grid.
Mm-hmm.
So that kind of told you what we could put in it, and I think at the time that he came up here and spoke, he said that we definitely, onsite storage, we could definitely get 20,000 cubic feet, I think it was, but I had just shared this with Councilmember Jackson earlier today, that Kimberly Horn was saying that Fillmore could possibly be intertwined with the Civic Hub area of getting stormwater off that road into the Civic Hub area. As it sits right now, the elevations don't allow it to, so.
And what I had asked, because of the other, the Meat Hunt report, and it, because of the fact that it specifically said that these calculations were not taking into consideration the tidal valve and any things that we had done to alleviate, so, that's why I had questions about the storm, impact, the impact for stormwater with the Civic Hub, due to the fact that we just got the rain garden in, we saw that it really worked well during that last weekend's water, but we don't know the impact to the tidal valve, that's why I was trying to figure all of this out before we, so we know whether that design is really something that we may even need to have to modify, because we don't know the impact of those things yet.
I think it's helpful for us to be reminded that this is a two-part thing, this is the B, the other part, the A, is the, the design work. Council at the last meeting did authorize staff to get a quote, for a proposal for the design work for the Civic Hub, as well as a proposal for Presidential Streets. When those, when those proposals come forward, I expect we're going to have more information that will help answer those questions, but what I would think, this question for this item, this B question is, hey, do you want to be prepared if you do want to pull the trigger on a stormwater improvement? You would still not do it if it didn't make sense, but if it does make sense, approving this would be a good thing to do, and you can always change course.
And that's why I hadn't questioned it, because I know we're pending information, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and, and the contract would always come back to City Council anyways, to approve the project anyways, it's just, do we want a budget for it, hoping that it will make a difference.
So, my question is that million, $1,050,000, is any of that, what part of stormwater, or is that without stormwater?
Half of it is stormwater.
I'm sorry?
I think $500,000 is stormwater.
It's the other parts.
So it isn't coming out of the general fund?
Yeah, these are, this is all CRA here.
Yeah, that's, uh.
So I, I think that's a good.
That's the CRA funding, but the, the, I think what you're asking, too, is where's the funding getting come from, that the transfer of stormwater into the CRA?
Oh, okay.
So it'll be ultimately CRA funding.
Mayor Pro Tem, any more questions that the council has on that one? All right, the next one is $1.6 million for the Presidential Streets, and like the other one, this is an A and a B, and the design comes first, which we're going to be getting a price for that, but we want to think about having the ability to pull the trigger, to do that, and this would be the funding mechanism for that. Of course, this is only the portion that is in the CRA, not the portion that is outside of the CRA, and we feel like this would get us that portion for one street.
And what part of that would be stormwater?
John?
Um, let's see, on the $1.6 million, uh, right now, this is just, that's all, that's all CRA funding. I don't have a breakout of any stormwater. Dave, do you think there'd be any stormwater in the $1.6?
There certainly can be, yes.
Okay, well then, if, if that's the case, then we would do extra money and do stormwater and through the CRA. I, we haven't, you know what, we haven't talked about that, that's good, right, because we haven't talked about a portion of the $1.6 million yet, but that's, we'll go ahead and take that, and then I'll talk with staff and see what portion of stormwater.
Well, it, there's also going to be a wastewater component, too, and that's the thing Scott kept talking about, those brittle ductile pipes.
And this may potentially increase the transfer, because Joey and I are in the middle of doing this, the transfer of, if there's additional art funding to help with this, too, so, that's a good, that's a good question, we'll, we have to add that now in.
And then what part have we, are we looking into grants to fund from Ridgewood to the beach? It only goes to Ridgewood.
I, I think when we, we think about city contribution, it can be the enterprise funds portion of it. We just need to make, we need to, I, I think we need to look at it in terms of 80% of, say, Fillmore is in the CRA, so 80% of the project costs can be funded by the CRA, the other is made up by other funds.
One other consideration on that, on the wastewater component of Presidential Streets, is if we are not standing firm on our pricing for wastewater, we're going to be cutting back on how we improve those residents in the Presidential Streets.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, the next item is the Traffic Safety Public Art Installation, which Lexi presented at the first workshop. Then we've got Canaveral Fire Rescue Enhanced Lightning Protection System, which I believe Zach presented on that, and then finally, the concession park, concession stand at the park. The total proposed for '24, '25 is $3,800,000, which we suspect we'll be able to handle that fully with CRA coming in next year, plus the debt service that CRA will have to pay, it's not in this listed here, but we anticipate we'll be able to handle the debt service and this as well out of CRA revenues next year, and that's not borrowing any money to do it. So Mayor Pro Tem, can I record consensus on all the CRA items as presented?
Consensus?
Okay, we'll record consensus for that, Daniel? The next one is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and on this one, we had several items that were recurring items, we can go through all of them, there's motor replacements, 1 and 2, 3, a pump replacement is 4, the VFD is the Variable Frequency Drive, is that correct, June? And then we got mixer replacements throughout the years, pyramid mixer rehabs, two years of that, special laboratory equipment coming in every year, vehicle replacements, we do have a couple vehicles in there, we talked about the F1, F250s or 2500s, the valve replacements are recurring, air conditioner replacements, got two of those programmed in year 2 and year 5, the fence replacement, that's pushed all the way out to the end, $100,000, you've got chemicals, you've got GIS mapping program, collection system upgrades every year, the effluent transfer blower pipe, the pump enclosure structures, that's the big one, of course, this year, that's just rolling into next year, continuing. Then we've got the resilience operation vehicles, that's the grant-funded ones, that's HMGP grant-funded there, council approved that HMGP application earlier in the year, or last year, and then the VAC truck, which we talked about pushing off a year. Any, any discussion or questions on any of those items, Mayor Pro Tem?
Any questions? I have one question, the sanitary sewer GIS mapping, $100,000, is that a certain area, or is that the whole city, or?
June, you want to, okay.
The whole city?
WW14 is the whole city. Do we have consensus for the items as presented for wastewater? Okay, we have consensus for that, Daniel, thank you. And lastly? And lastly, we're in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, uh, we have, um, Central Boulevard, we talked about, that's the section from A one eight to North Atlantic, and that's for, uh, year three and four. Uh, Canaveral Drainage Basin improvements, um, and that, that's, um, that one's been pushed off a few times, Tim, correct? Uh, IM, or SW two?
Drainage Basin.
Canaveral Drainage Basin improvements?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that has been pushed off for a couple years now, um, and that, is that still a relevant number? We still comfortable with that?
Although, although, uh, who wants the engineers?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
The en, the engineer's proposal for this project was astronomical, and I told him that we need to go back to the grindstone, that we weren't going to accept the proposal that he gave us. It's kind of like the same situation that we're dealing with down there on Center Street, we were going to put a pump station in, but his cost was three times as more as what we're going to be paying down there. So I said, no, we need to fix something out, so I just haven't been able to catch up with that project, so I kind of, we pushed it out for.
And, and the way I think of the Canaveral Drainage Basin is like number two after Center Street Basin, it's handled, this is the one we're going to want to focus on next. So I think it's appropriate to get updated pricing and keep that pushed out for now?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is the Harbor Heights Stormwater, that's the final pipe, and then that, that whole pipe system in Harbor Heights has been redone, correct?
Correct.
And that's a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred. Then we've got Center Street Wet Pond and West Central Boulevard Wet Pond, and like we said earlier, those are contingent on us acquiring property, they'll keep getting pushed back until we do. Uh, then we've got the Oak Lane improvements, which have been a couple years in the coming, um, that's three hundred thousand from stormwater, and the rest of it is, where is it?
The other six hundred Ks in IM.
Uh, it's an IM, so that's just matching with that one. Uh, Thurn Boulevard improvements, which we talked about in the impact fees that are going to cover those, um, and then the portable stormwater pump. Um, June, you want to talk about the advantages of having the portable stormwater pump? Or Tim, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm thinking of your, your department deploying it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Um, I believe that this was, is this your? I'm going to let Lexi speak on this.
Okay.
She hijacked one, because.
It's a hot potato.
So this was initially proposed as something to be investig, or something to be, um, applied for with an HMGP grant, but we learned through the process that, um, it would not be eligible or competitive, uh, because it's considered a piece of equipment, um, as a, as a pump. So it was switched to fully funded out of stormwater, um, and this is just kind of a more agile approach to additional flooding, so it kind of would serve as a Center Street pump, but on wheels, for lack of a better description, so in other areas where we might have some, uh, water sitting in our system underground, this would be able to remove that prior to a heavy rainfall event.
And we've used a pump before on Canaveral Drainage Basin also, like we have on Center Street, so having the mobile capacity, I think is very important to address it as needed.
Are we going to need that with the new valve and all the things that are?
That, so that system only serves Center Street Basin. This is a mobile system that could respond to other basins in the city.
So Mayor Protem, can I record consensus from council on stormwater items as presented, one through eight? Counsel, we'll, we'll record consensus there, Danielle? That gets us through that, um, and Mayor, if, if, if you would like, Tim would like to talk about the, uh, schedule for the Center Street pump, um, and when that is going to be actually happening.
Caught me off guard.
All right, sorry about that, I knew you wanted to talk about this.
Um, all right, so, uh, Center Street Pump Station is doing well. We, uh, we dropped the enclosure in that will be housing the valve that we have at the wastewater treatment facility. The contractor's working very quickly on this project, so we're excited about that. But I'm getting a timeline from the contractor, which he was supposed to have to me two weeks ago, um, of when they're actually going to place that valve in. Now, I know that's an excited, an exciting part of the whole project, because that's what's going to keep us from flooding upstream. Um, I am being told that most likely this will be installed on Tuesday, I do not have a time yet, though. So I would like to invite everybody in here, if they would like, to come watch them as soon as I can get a time, um, if you guys want to, and see, put the valve in.
Woo-hoo, I do.
He'll send us an email?
Yes, yeah, I'll, that first email I sent you, I'll just reply all back to that email, maybe add a few more people that I would think would be interested. But as far as I know, the WPRO valve representatives will be there, the engineers will be there, the contractor, of course, is going to be there, because he's installing it. Possibly, uh, a few other people will be there that, um, that I might be getting a hold of, uh, Channel thirteen news might be there. So this is a big deal, I'd like to, I'm excited.
Mayor.
Stormwater.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor Protem, if I could go back, I made a misstatement on the consensus for Stormwater Enterprise Fund items S one through S eight. We actually did talk about adding a ninth one, which would be the project for Long Point Road, uh, and that would be in twenty-four, twenty-five, so just to be clear for the record, do we have consensus for S one through S eight as written? And adding a project for twenty-four, twenty-five and Long Point Road, at the end of Long Point Road? Okay, Mayor, thank you. Danielle, we have consensus as amended.
Well, I think, um, I think we got through that pretty well, we got a lot of questions answered. I think, when are we scheduling another workshop?
The next steps, um, Danielle, if you could go to the agenda cover, uh, down at the bottom, um, there you go. So there's our next steps right there, next steps, uh, June thirtieth, um, City Council will receive the budget, uh, and then the first workshop for that will be on July sixteenth at five o'clock, preceding the, that council meeting also on July sixteenth.
So there won't be another workshop before we receive the budget?
Okay, so I have a question, because Mr. DeLeo prompted this earlier. So if we, what will, what will trigger us knowing whether we can, whether we need to stay the same on the five percent wastewater increase? And what our millage is going to be, what our budget is on the other side with the other funds? Because you have to let the city of Cocoa know, like, next week, if there's.
Well, now, with, with, I, what, uh, Councilmember Jackson is alluding to, is that there's a Florida statute states that, uh, if you do, if you're going to do an increase to your utility or whatever, you have to put, uh, the notice on the previous month's bill of which, so you'd have to, if you were going to do an inquiry, if you're going to do an increase, it has to go on the, would go on a June bill, I talked to Cocoa today about this, and, um, then we, because that would be telling them that the city council is going to consider an increase, and that would be, you'd be doing that, say, if you're doing that in July, uh, but if there's a decrease, there, there doesn't have to be any announcement.
So we know, we know we're pretty much set at five. If, if we ran, once you run all the budget numbers that we talked about today with the adjustments that staff recommended pushing things out to the next year, then we'll have a better idea, um, as to how our funds stand in those various, you know, how the, the unrestricted fund that we're able to use if something broke in regards to wastewater, um, you know, what our enterprise fund will be and our general fund.
Well, let me, let me, let me clar, clarify that. So based on what consensus council had today, there's really no, there was no effect on the enterprise fund. Uh, so that, the five percent is the five percent now, and we won't even look at that unless somehow council decided it wanted to affect something with that. But remember too, that if you, if you try to change, if you try to change the rate, it's an ordinance and it needs, requires two readings, which, uh, at this point, I think, you know, that would have to be in June and July, because August would be too late, okay? And as far as the general fund goes, that's the only place where we really, um, move things out that could, that will affect the, the millage. Because now we're, we're taking all this, I, we probably removed between what we did and you did, maybe, let's just say for discussion purposes, one point seven million dollars. I'm sure, uh, based on my preliminary, look, we need to do more than that, but one point seven million dollars, so now, when we go in, when I, in, in, in ten days or the beginning of June, whatever, when I get the gross taxable value, I could plug that in, and then I could see where our millage is going to start off with, and then that's when council then will go into the meeting in July with the proposed budget, what its recommendations is where they want to settle on where they want the millage to be, okay? Which will determine how much ad valorem we get in, uh, there, but as far as the sewer thing goes, there's really nothing that was said in here that affects it, and only the discussion that we were concerned about our reserves.
Except for that we pushed out on the wastewater fund, we did push out.
What did we push?
Wasn't the building, well, that's infrastructure, that's in the general fund.
We didn't push anything out in wastewater.
Okay.
So, I, so that tells me, based on what's occurred today, that, um, there seems to be no action on any type of agenda item or whatever to do regarding, because there's been no, there's no, there's been nothing said about deviating from the five percent, um, increase that was already approved by council in twenty-two.
Right, and I was looking at the, um, the specific wastewater funds and the, you know, in that section. And literally. Yeah, literally, like, I made notes because we pushed out something, no, we didn't.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't push anything out.
Not on wastewater.
All right, so, does anybody have any other questions for John or Todd or Anthony? Each other? Um, I think we've accomplished a lot here tonight, it was a good discussion, um, so the next, um, meeting will be July, um, and we'll have the budget in hand then.
Thirty June, and as a courtesy to, um, to council, now, we do have a holiday this Monday, but, uh, by the end of next week, all the changes that were made and everything, we're going to give you, I'm not going to give you a new binder, because we don't, we don't like to waste binders, but I will give you a package of the CIPs, okay? And then what you could do is, that's where we're at, and you could discard, if you'd like, it's not going to be any good to you, you could discard your previous CIPs when you get the new package, because you had consensus on what you were going to move forward, and, uh, we'll get that to you probably by next Friday, it'll be sitting in your box.
Right, Todd, do you have anything else?
Coffee with the city manager tomorrow at ten.
You know, I'd like to also extend my thanks to, um, my finance team, who's been working so hard in so many areas and on this budget, and it just continues for the rest of, you know, another, till about June twenty-first, so, but I want to, I want to thank my team.
I agree.
Yes, thank you.
Amazing, Cheryl, Joey.
Thank you, guys, it's a lot of work, and thank you for all you do.
Donna, Kelly, Mike.
Um, anybody else?
No, just thank you for doing some of our work for us by cutting, pushing things back, so I appreciate that, appreciate all the hard work.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.